Call the Select Board meeting for Wednesday, October 21st, 2020 to order. First order of business is the consent agenda. We have warrants, AP 2116, AP 2116S, AP 2117-2, AP 2117, AP 2117S.
Go move.
Yeah, second.
And I'm gonna wait just a sec. I thought Christian was there. There's Christian. Christian, we're just on the consent agenda, just the warrants. We have a motion and a second. Did you have any discussion on those? Christian, can you hear me?
What was it? I'm sorry, I just signed on. Is it, did you guys start already?
Yeah, I thought you were there, I apologize. Started the consent agenda, we just have warrants, we have a motion and a second. I just, if you had any discussion you wanted to, about the warrants?
Oh, nope, go ahead, sorry.
Any further discussion from anybody else? All right, all those in favor?
Yes.
Any Select Board discussion? This is a warrant articles for this, the...
Consent agendas?
Consent agenda. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then we're gonna, we have Linda Sanderson here, and... Linda, is David Eisenthal here yet or no? No? Okay, so we'll go ahead and, we're gonna go to the... We have here, the restorative justice program for the Hadley Police Department, so we can get Chief Mason out of here. Chief, last meeting, Mr. Fiden brought up some questions about the restorative justice program, and I didn't know enough about it to comment, so do you wanna kinda introduce it and how we got here and what this program is? And I see he's here tonight, so...
Yep, absolutely, I would be happy to. Can everybody hear me? Okay?
Yeah.
All right. So, we were approached, probably a couple of months ago, from the District Attorney's Office, that they're interested in partnering with not only Hadley PD, but several other police departments in Hampshire and Franklin County for a restorative justice program. They wanted to take a different approach when it comes to certain crimes that are committed within our two counties, so long as they fit certain categories. The idea behind it is to try to involve, basically, restorative justice is a process where, you know, the offender, victims, and even members of the community, I'm sure you probably saw within our posts that they look for volunteers from this community to be involved in this process as well. So, if you have a situation where there isn't an actual victim that can be named, for example, if somebody sprays graffiti on a building or something like that, you can have members of your actual, of your community work collectively to, you know, try to identify what the harm was and try to get whoever the offender is to, you know, make reparations to, you know, whoever the victim is or the community in these types of situations. I know that, you know, there was a concern, David, you know, you and I discussed this, that there's a concern that, you know, serious crimes would be diverted into a restorative justice process. That's, that is not going to happen. I'm actually working on our draft policy right now. I've seen a couple of different policies from some other police departments that are already utilizing this same program and this same format. It's a voluntary process, it's voluntary not only for the victim, but also for the offender, and there are certain criteria that must be met in order for these cases to be allowed to be diverted into the restorative justice process. The victim has to be willing. They have, it's, like I said, it's completely voluntary. If they are against this happening, this, then charges get filed and it goes through a court process. The offender actually has to have admitted to committing the offense before it, that's another one of the criteria that it, that must be met before it could go into this process. They actually have to show some type of remorse and a desire to repair the harm that they've done. And the police department and the District Attorney's Office, one of the final criteria is that they must be able to assure a safe process. You know, we don't wanna put people in the same room together to mediate if there's any danger that any further harm could be caused. There are specific crimes which will never be diverted unless there's some type of extenuating circumstance. OUIs, alcohol or drugs will not be diverted into restorative justice. Certain types of unlicensed oper... Leaving the scene of a property damage or PI, a personal injury accident will never be diverted. Sexual assaults or any other related offenses will not be diverted. Domestic violence, any cases with vulnerable populations like the elderly or children will never be diverted. Crimes involving violent, any type of violence against a person, especially with strangulation, assault and battery with dangerous weapons, standard assault and batteries, armed robberies, mayhem, none of that will be diverted. Harassment and restraining order violations will not be diverted. So, I've been a police officer for 20 years now, worked in Hampshire County. I'm well aware that there are certain cases that just simply are handled very leniently. The, I would never have gone into this process and accepted this, and agreed to work with this restorative justice program if I thought it was going to become more lenient and take away the rights in a crime that I know should be prosecuted. The idea behind this is to try to find some other outlet, some other way to repair the harm when we know that the court system and law enforcement can't effectively deal with what happened. A lot of the cases that sort of justice, the restorative justice program, the one that we are using, divert right now, have to do with what I just mentioned. There was a case with, I wanna say it's Rockton, Mass. or something like that, one of those, one of the big cities, I was on a conference call last week where some three youths spray painted swastikas on a few town buildings or city buildings in their community. Police Department did an investigation, able to locate these three individuals, and the case was, it was determined with a consultation between the District Attorney's Office and the police department, and the managers of the buildings, they wanted to try something different, and this is the process that they used. The, you know, the people were allowed to come in and explain to these young people what, doing something like that, how that made them feel. And remorse was shown, the swast, the graffiti was cleaned up, they, you know, did what they had to do to resolve the case, and most of us who've been in law enforcement long enough know that if that case had gone to a criminal hearing, much less than that would have come out of it. So, I hope that kind of encapsulates what the process is about. Like I said, I have a draft policy in front of me. If anybody, Mr. Fiden or anyone else would like me to, I'm happy to do that. You can read through it and can have a back and forth, one-on-one email or phone call, and I can try to answer any other questions that people have. But, you know, like I said, I was, the intent is never, ever to remove, remove any of the rights that a victim has in these cases, and simply hope that with a different approach, we can have some effect where in a, in a standard court hearing or regular process, we weren't getting that. Is that, that's best I can do for right now.
Mr. Fiden, you had a couple of questions last time. Did you have any follow-ups for the chief on that?
Yeah, yeah, I would like to follow up, and I know, I don't wanna take up all of the time here, so I'll try to be very, very concise in just getting out some of my concerns. Basically, I'm familiar with the restorative justice from, you know, doing reading. It is, it is something that's been talked about in our school system, and I was surprised to see this come out in our, in our town. I'm not a fan of it for several reasons. One is because it's not, in my, in my view, in my research, it's not really evidence-based. And I think, I think if when you, when you start to look at the studies that have been done on this, that, that becomes very clear, that the evidence is not really there to back, to support this kind of, this kind of a program. And for an example, I'll give you is, on the, I guess it's C4RJ, that's the program that we're working with now. And if you, if you go to their website, there is a page, it's the first page that I went to, to see what this program was all about, this, this local program, it's not really local, it's near Boston, but to see what it was all about, I went to the page that was called Success Data, and it has a list of very impressive statistics on that page. And the two that were interesting to me were recidivism and also reparation. And in both of those cases, the programs claimed that they, they made a really impressive claim as far as recidivism. And that was also mentioned by several of the police chiefs in the newspaper as their reasoning for supporting this. And it was pretty impressive, and I started to, and I wanted to look at those two, those two factors, and I clicked on the link, they did have a link that said this was based on a nationwide study of restorative justice programs, so I kinda tracked that down. And when you go to the, when you go to the page, it opens up a, it's not a nationwide study, it's an article, really. It's a compilation of, it's an article by a professor, who is a professor of restorative justice and who makes his living off of this, and it's from 1998. And he, in the, in this article, he cites a number of, of programs, studies that have been done, but mostly he cites his own work, and it's, that was kind of a red flag to me when, when someone's citing their own work as a, it doesn't, doesn't have as much credibility. But I dug a little deeper into some of his own work, and I went to the information on recidivism. And he does, it's from one of his books from 1994, so we're getting back there, we're going, and some of the research was even earlier, it's going back, you know, into the eighties. And what bothered me was that he did have those numbers in there, he did, but it wasn't a nationwide study, it was based on three different programs from the early nineties or eighties, and he came up with those numbers, but he also, he also actually admitted that these numbers, they were not statistically significant. So, in other words, after digging deep into these numbers, the person who wrote this article, he said, "These don't mean very much, they were not significant, statistically significant." So, and yet, and then basically, I'll try, for sake of time, the same was true of reparations. It was based on two different studies from the early nineties, and, and it really wasn't, it didn't mean very much. But somehow that made it onto the Success Data page of this organization. That bothered me, and, cause it's, it's really not accurate. It says right on the page that this is based on, you know, a nationwide study of restorative justice programs. And, you know, I'm in advertising, and you can't make those kinda claims, at least in the private sector, and get away with it, because it's just, yeah, if you make a claim, you have to back it up. In my mind, this wasn't backed up. So, that to me is, is kinda, this is kinda disqualifying, because I did look into other research, and there are, there are some more recent studies, and they don't, they just don't support it. There are two RAN studies from 2019, most of these are school-based, cause this is very popular in schools because of some recent Obama administration programs that they, they wanted to promote. And basically, the, it, it hasn't done what it's proclaimed to do. I mean, the two recent RAN studies, in, there was, I believe it's Pittsburgh and Maine. In Pittsburgh, the test scores went actually down in a middle school, especially among black students. And in the Maine study, it showed basically no difference as far as bullying and that type of thing. So, that might explain why their success data is kind of outdated and not really useful. And frankly, it's just inaccurate. So, that, that did bother me, and as I mentioned a few weeks ago, restorative justice has been, it's actually been disavowed by our own Justice Department and our own Department of Education, following the Parkland massacre. The School Safety Commission studied, studied this, this is one of the factors that they studied and...
Send it to you.
Basically, they said that it was, schoolteachers felt that they were pressured into keeping students in school. It was, it wasn't accomplishing what they, what they wanted to do, and it was, it was a little bit dangerous. And in my own, in my own reading, I've read a book called Why Meadow Died, which is by a gentleman named Andrew Pollak, who was one of the Parkland parents. And in this book, he goes into great detail about restorative justice programs, this type of program. Now, in Parkland, Florida, they had a program, it was much more comprehensive than what we're talking about. It was called the Promise Program, and it integrated with the school department and the sheriff's department. And it was a model that was held up, and, but we all, we all saw what was, what, what happened there with, you know, such, such a terrible tragedy. And what Mr. Pollak says was that this, the Parkland massacre was the most, most avoidable school shooting in U.S. history. And I kind of took that to heart, and also he said that he didn't, he wanted to be the last father that didn't know what was going on in his town and in his school. So, this is something that, it was, it had, it held a lot of weight with me. And when I, and when, as I said, when I went to their site, it just doesn't, it doesn't have much credibility when they're putting that kind of misleading information. A couple of things to, to the points that the chief made, and I appreciate that we have our own, we have our own criteria for this, for running this program, but I'm, I'm looking at the, their website, they're at, actually their annual reports, C4RJ right now. And, and this was something that the DA brought up in the newspaper, he said this is gonna be, you know, this is gonna be for vandalism, low-level crimes. But when you look at the website, it, actually the top, most of the crimes are assaults, and including 10.5% were felony assaults. And I'm not an expert on what a felony assault is, but I, I'm sure it's, it's pretty serious.
Let me, let me let the chief jump in here, because I think my understanding is we have the ability to set our policy of what crimes are part of the program. So, chief, if you wanna jump in on some of that.
David? David, before anybody goes any further, could somebody, and I'm being stupid right now, because I am at certain extents, could they please explain what recidivism is? I think a lot of people, not only myself, I'm not familiar with that word, and I'd like a little bit of explanation, since it's been thrown out there and repeated on several times here, and I'd like an explanation of it.
It's basically when somebody commits a crime again or goes back to crime. So, if you've been convicted of a crime, you know, it's, it's talking about, there's aging out and things like that. As you get older, people tend to commit less crimes, people tend to get in trouble less. The recidivism rate is how often those people go back to, you know, a life of crime or committing crimes.
Okay, so, people that, people that have been rehabbed and whether or not they go back or not, is that how it is?
Basically.
Exactly, and on their website, it does say, it says, "The following data comes from a U.S.-wide study on restorative justice programs," and they, they have a chart, recidivism for traditional criminal justice is 27%, restorative justice is 18%. As I, as I just explained, there's no basis for that, that should not be on that site, honestly.
Let the chief jump in and talk a little bit about...
I just wanna finish, I don't, I think that's the kind of thing that, is, the DA mentioned that, and this is the kind of thing we should be preventing, this kind of marketing or promotion, not signing on to, in my view.
Go ahead, chief.
Okay, yeah, so, as far as recidivism and reparations, the statistics that they have on their website, I don't know what metrics the District Attorney's Office used to determine that this was the company that, that they wanted to, to work with. I don't know that there are other companies that do this, but within their research, they wanted to find an alternative to charging people with crimes when both the victim and the offender didn't want to go down that road. As far as, you know, restorative justice programs being some type of cause for school shootings or low test scores, I don't know how you draw that nexus, but, you know, I don't really, I don't really have a comment to that, because I don't know how you make that connection. As far as the assaults and felonious assaults and all that, as Chair Phil just mentioned, we have the ability to work with the District Attorney's Office and determine whether or not cases are going to be deferred into this program, and the victim themselves has the authority, almost the sole authority, to determine whether or not that happens. The one assault case that they talked about in my last meeting was a mutual combat assault, which I think is probably most of what you're seeing there, where two people get into a fight with one another, there are no other victims, so to speak, and rather than charge both of these individuals for assault and battery and disorderly conduct on one another, they offer them the opportunity to go through this program. As far as reparations go, that's a huge part for me, because if, the example like the graffiti, if that isn't taken care of, this case goes to criminal trial. That is part of the authority that we hold when these, when these cases get diverted, that the, the case must be fulfilled to the satisfaction of those involved. So, if you have an offender who's simply sitting there, quiet, not participating, successfully completing the process to the satisfaction of the victim, the C4RJ, the District Attorney's Office and the police department, this case then can get referred back to criminal trial. So, there's multiple safeguards, you know, within this process. As far as any of the other stuff you brought up with statistics and school shootings, and I, I can't speak to that, I don't, I don't know where those connections lie.
I appreciate that, and the, as I said, it's, it's, the, most of these statistics are referring to school-based programs, because that is where it has really become popular in the last few years, since 2014, and up until the last, I believe it's two years ago, when it was recommended that, by the Justice Department and the Department of Education, that schools get away from that. And this, I know this is a, this is for adult offenders, or at least it's a community program and not, not a school program. And I just have a couple of quick points, maybe that, that the chief, or just to bring out, and then you can move on, is that the, one of the things that I, that I, that I don't like is what is about the program is that it is, it is basically a victim, a victim and an offender-based program, and it's actually confidential, and it, they go into, people go into the program, and it's not, it's not the traditional system where we have, which is a community, crimes are community issues, whereas if the home next to me is robbed tonight, that's not only going to affect my neighbor, it's going to affect me, it's the same with graffiti or assaults or any crime. The tradition has been that that affects the whole community, and that's, that's one of the great things about our justice system is that it is community-based, and people do have to go to a public forum and, and be judged in that format. And the, I think that's one of the great things, and I really would not like to get away from that. And finally, the...
So, just, just let me, let me just jump in really quick, just to comment on that, on the confidentiality part. The only part of the process that's confidential is the actual meeting that occurs. Everything up to that point is public record. There will be a report done, it will go to the District Attorney's Office, there's a victim named, if there is a victim, there's a suspect named, the juvenile laws will still apply. So, if you're dealing with a juvenile, that name is redacted, but that would be redacted no matter what. So, it's just the, the process that's confidential is just the last part of the process where the victim has agreed to enter into this process. So, I think that's the other part of it, and I agree with you 100%. Part of what I like about our, our system is that it is out in the open, and anyone can attend. The problem is, is that, in my experience, the opportunity for the victim or even others who are affected by the crime is severely stunted, especially in our counties, Franklin and Hampshire, where our district attorney handles cases, case load. And that's kind of the idea behind this, like, you don't go to a court and then people don't get a chance to stand up and say, "Hey, this is how this made me feel." That doesn't happen, not in a regular court setting. So, the idea behind this was, that's not gonna happen in a regular court setting, and the victim agrees to try to do this in another setting, and the community wants to become involved. They then can become involved, that part of it is confidential, but it gives victims or people who are affected by it more of an opportunity, I think, to stand up and say, "Hey, this is how what you did affected me." And the part about robbing the neighbor next door's house, that's another crime, not gonna get diverted anyways. That's a, that's a significant felony, so, I knew you were, I know you were throwing that out just to kinda give an example, but that one's not gonna meet the criteria.
Well, it is, at least, this is one of the, those are the crimes that the, that this, they do deal with, breaking and entering, larceny, even hate crimes.
So, breaking and entering, larceny, breaking and entering and larceny don't have to deal, don't have to do with actual human beings involved. Comes home invasion or robbery, that's when an actual person is involved, it's a victim against a person. A B is something like, somebody broke into your garage and stole your lawnmower, totally different. Those, anything with a human being involved, where there is, you know, like you said, a robbery, totally different. And those will be looked at completely differently, especially by my standards.
My, my final, my final point, it's to address one of your points, is about, my concern is about the victim, and I know you've said several times, and it's been made clear that this will be voluntary for the victims. I'm not, I'm not entirely comfortable with that, if, if, because I, I just, I can see, maybe not intentional, but a victim may feel pressured to participate. If the, if the police department, the DA, the DA and lawyers are coming, say, "Hey, do you wanna be responsible for this, this person going to jail?" And I think there's a, there's an element of coercion to it, and that, and then that victim, and like I said, I'm just going based on what's on their site, they have harassment crimes like that, assaults on there. If someone isn't in there in a confidential situation, that, that, I'm, I'm not entirely comfortable with that, frankly, it's just...
And we gotta move on, but I just wanna say that, that is similar to any crime, where the victim has to provide a statement for a report, has to, you know, basically talk about what happened, so, so I get it, there has to be some, you know, a lot of people say, "Oh, I don't wanna press charges, you know, I don't, I don't wanna get involved." So, they kinda have to make that decision one way or another, whether it's going to a criminal court or they're being diverted anyways, but, but no, I can kinda see what you're saying at the same time. So, we really do have to move on though, cause this is taking longer than what I thought already. I know that, and I don't wanna cut you off, so if you have more questions, maybe get with the chief, and I'm sure he'll be happy to answer any of the questions you have.
Yeah, Mr. Fiden, please, please shoot me an email or give me a call, or if you're comfortable, send your phone number in an email. I'm happy to talk further about this, you bring up some good points, and to be quite honest with you, I would be 100% willing to consider making some adjustments to the policy based on some of your recommendations to ensure, especially that last point that you just made. especially that last point that you just made, um, that there is no pressure. There is a whole section on how these cases will get referred. So I'm happy to, to discuss any of those details with you.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you to the select board. Appreciate it.
Any uh, comments from the select board on this or any last questions before we move on? Yeah. All right. Thanks, Chief. All right. We're going to jump over to Linda and David Eisenthal. And uh, they have an update on borrowing. So Linda and David, I'll let you take it away and give us the good news.
Linda on?
May I ask a question?
Uh, no ma'am, we're working with uh, Mr. Eisenthal and Linda the Treasurer at this point.
Hey, um.
I don't see Linda on, Mr. Chairman. I, I think I'll just uh.
She's just reconnecting right now, David.
Okay, I'll, I'll wait for Linda.
Okay. There she is.
Yeah.
She's having, must be having internet problems again.
I, I was, I was. So I did just log back in and um, hopefully I'll, I'm here to stay. Okay, yes. Did you start?
Yeah, tell us, tell us the good news. We were waiting for you on the bond.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we have, uh, we do have good news on the bond. We have our, uh, we uh, went out to bid last week and um, David will go into a little more detail, but we have interest rate of under two percent, one point nine five five percent. And we've got whole stack of materials for select board to sign over the next couple of days, which we'll, we'll schedule with you also. And um, just as a reminder, this is our last financing, final, last financing for all, uh, all three of the buildings that the town has purchased and um, funded and, and financed and uh, built over the last couple of years. And uh, one more reminder that we keep needing to tell people is there will be no, uh, that the increase, the debt exclusion increase on their tax bills to pay for these buildings has already happened. It will not, the debt exclusion will not be going up by reason of this financing, just as it has not specifically gone up for any others in the last three years. In fact, because of our low interest rates, we may actually, we'll probably be seeing a decrease um, much sooner than anticipated, but more on that another time after we had, we've had a chance to uh, meet um, about budgets. So um.
They're here.
Go ahead, David Eisenthal. Thank you for all of your help.
You're welcome. Thank you, uh, for you, Mr. Chairman. Um, there, I believe that there's going to be a vote uh, in front of the select board, uh, that will approve the issuance of the seven million, three hundred and ten thousand uh, par amount of general obligation bonds. As Linda said, this uh, issue completes the permanent financing of the local share of the library, the fire substation and the senior center. Uh, the town has uh, five million, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars worth of bands that will mature November twelfth. Those will be paid with proceeds of the bond issue and uh, some other proceeds will provide the final new money, what we call new money for those projects. And in addition, there is additional financing for the ongoing stormwater project. Uh, the structure of this issue is a nearly thirty-year repayment. Um, the um, this is being done on a level debt service basis, like a mortgage. Uh, the first interest that will be payable on this on August first of twenty twenty-one, first principal, February first, twenty twenty-two, and then the whole uh, transaction is fully paid off, February first, twenty fifty. Um, as Linda said, we, uh, the town took bids last week, October fifteenth. Uh, I'll make the comment that uh, the bond market last week in this country was very busy. Um, issuers were trying to stay ahead of the presidential election as actually the town of Hadley uh, was doing. We had originally planned to uh, uh, have the bids the last week in October, uh, but moved that a little bit further away to avoid what we thought might be some market turmoil. But because of the volume in large part, uh, the town received two bids, which uh, I will say is a less than optimal result. But the winning underwriter, Piper Sandler, has had a true interest cost of one point nine five percent. When you add in the cost of issuance, uh, you're just a lit, just a hair above two percent. Uh, now comparing that to the July twenty nineteen issue, the first issue that financed the library, uh, fire substation and senior center, that went out at uh, what was then a very low rate of two point seven percent, probably about high two sevens, including the issuance cost. So rates are definitely lower than they were in um, uh, in the summer of twenty nineteen. Well, I mean, we're recommending, uh, and we've been recommend, we have recommended and are recommending that the town proceed with this, uh, uh, we didn't expect that the uh, true interest cost would be below two percent. Um, I will give you a couple of other details that uh, Linda will be taking delivery of the proceeds on the twenty ninth uh, of uh, October, which is a week from tomorrow and uh, the notes, the outstanding notes mature on November twelfth. Um, Linda, I don't, I'll, Mr. Chair, I, I guess I'll ask Linda if she wants to say anything about the bond rating before I go ahead and do that.
Uh, go right ahead.
Okay.
Do you want, yes, you commit, you should.
Okay, so um, the town, a- as it did uh, in uh, June and July of twenty nineteen, the set town sought a rating of S and P global ratings. Uh, the uh, uh, the town, we organized a conference call with the analysts from S and P on October second. The result of this review was an affirmation of the triple A rating with stable outlook, which would, the town was upgraded to the triple A last year from the double A plus. Uh, I'll, I'll uh, pass along the comments that um, they, S and P views the town as continuing to have uh, financial and management strength. And they also see the local economy as very strong, reflecting the strength of the regional economy. Uh, S and P did cite the COVID pandemic as presenting risks for the economy that could pressure the town's finances in the next few years, although they are saying that at this point, they haven't seen much evidence of this so far. So um, that's really all I have. I'll turn it back to uh, Chair or to uh, to Linda.
Was, was there a specific language that we needed to read for the motion and?
Um, I think that came in the package that is there.
I was looking through it, but it's very long and I may have missed the actual motion.
Okay.
That's okay. We can uh, I think Jennifer's.
The, I think the important part of that is, and Linda, I think is.
Yeah.
But if I start, how about if I start with?
There is, there is a vote and it is in what was sent to you. There's just so much was sent to you. Now I, 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 now I see that I should have said separately. So let me tell you where it is. Um, oh, uh.
Linda, Linda, can you, can you read it? And then I will approve it. Because I don't have it in front of me.
Sure. It goes on for uh, four pages, but um, okay. How about um, I find which page it is on, on Word docs and what I sent to you. And meanwhile, is there something more to talk with David? Well, okay. Let me start by reading it. It says, uh, this is what the clerk is going to be certifying. Um, and the clerk, I believe, is Christian Stanley. Is, is that right? Okay. Um, he certifies that at a meeting of the board held October twenty-one, twenty twenty, of which meeting all members of the bird board were duly notified and at which forum was present, the following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear upon the official record of the board in my custody. Voted that the sale of the seven million, three hundred and ten thousand general obligation municipal purpose loan of two thousand, uh, twenty bonds, unlimited tax of the town dated October twenty-nine, twenty twenty, the bonds to Piper Sandler and Company at the price of seven million, four hundred ninety-seven thousand, oh, ninety-one point forty cents and accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bonds shall be payable on February one of the years and in the principal amounts and bear interest at the respective rates as follows. And there is a chart of the amounts due and when they're due, and that is in your materials. Further voted that the bonds maturing on February one, two, twenty thirty-two, February one, twenty thirty-four, thirty-six, thirty-eight, forty, each of those February one years shall be subject to mandatory redemption or mature as follows. Term bond. And then for each of the years, it gives the amounts that are due at that time. And that goes on for a page, uh, page and a half. And again, I can give you the specific reference to this uh, in your materials afterwards. But rather than read that entire chart, I will go on to the further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated October seven, twenty twenty, and a final official statement dated October fifteen, twenty twenty, the official statement. Each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, treasurer be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved and adopted. Further voted that the bonds shall be subject to redemption at the option of the town upon such terms and conditions as are set forth in the official statement. Further voted that the town treasurer and the select board be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC rule one, five, C two dash twelve in such forms as may be approved by bond council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds as applicable for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the town, town treasurer to establish post issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town tre- teachers in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the bonds and to comply with relevant securities laws. Further voted that any certificates or documents relating to the bonds may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original and all of which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or by other electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery, as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to such document and electronical, electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents and all matters relating thereto having the same legal effect as original signatures. Final further voted that each member of the select board, the town clerk and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I, um, and then the clerk will further certify that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, date, time and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the about votes, was filed with the town clerk and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visitable to the public at all hours in or on the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located, or if applicable, in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General is set forth in nine forty CMR twenty-nine point oh three two B, at least forty-eight hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting and remains so posted at the time of the meeting that no deliberations or decisions in connection with the sale of bonds were taken in executive session, all in accordance with general laws, chapter thirty A, sections eighteen to twenty-five, as amended, further suspended, supplemented or modified by the executive order of the governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, chapter thirty A, section twenty, dated March twelve, twenty twenty. That's it.
So, so move. Second.
Let, let me just say, make sure I got that. Christian, you made the motion. Uh, Joyce seconded. And then uh, Jennifer's going to roll call vote this. So that way we all are on record and this is all perfect.
Right. And, and then Christian will be on his own, uh, certifying this vote, um, the, the pages that I just wrote, uh, read.
Okay, roll call vote. Phil?
Yes.
Chungaloo?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
Wes Givitz?
Yes.
Devin Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, perfect. Well, thank you very much, um, Linda and David, and thank you for uh, all your hard work with the S and P review, uh, rating review. Um, glad we got that out of the way for another year or so. So I appreciate all, all the hard work.
David, Phil, you had also asked um, about a comparison of interest rates, which uh, David Eisenthal is prepared to give at this time. Okay, so um, right, because as you recall, we had originally when we, um, well, some as you recall, be, um, we had uh, projected uh, these buildings at five percent interest and um, what, four, four years ago. And um, we have done better than that. And I think David Phil asked at the last meeting, um, how, what, what does that actually mean? So uh, David Eisenthal.
And. Well, Mr. Chair, uh, what I did is I took both bond issues, last July's issue and this issue, and ran them as if they were uh, done at five percent, which was the original um, uh, projected interest rate, and then compared that to the actual interest that, that uh, will be paid by the town uh, on these issues. And the difference is about eight million dollars over the thirty or so years. So.
Eight million dollars. Yeah. That's huge. That's why we will, yeah.
Thank you to you and to David Nixon and all the people that worked to get us that rating because it's really makes a huge difference, as you have just said.
That basically buys us another building is what it amounts to.
Any take?
Not quite, not quite the Russell school, but I, I do appreciate our uh, financial team, Linda, um, the collector, uh, Sue, um, David Eisenthal, I mean, everybody just works for David Nixon and Carol now, Carolyn that's now in on this also. Um, it really takes a village to get all these things done and we so appreciate your job. We, we really thank you for your, what you do for the town of Hadley. Thank you.
It was the right time to do these buildings. It, it really was, um.
Yeah, prove that, huh?
Yeah.
So thank you. That's really a great percentage. Thank you very much.
Okay. Well, thank you, David. Thanks for joining us and thank you, Linda.
All right.
Have a good night.
And we'll get the signs. So uh, select board, I assume, has to go sign them in front of a notary this time, right?
Um, yes, well, uh, and well, Jessica is in, um, we would like them to, to be sent back to town council, to bond council by the end of the week. So if select board members could get into town hall, um, it, it would be nice to know exactly when you're coming so that we could all be there because you're each signing over thirty times. And so there's a lot of papers that we, that we want to make sure, you know, I'm there, we'll probably can, we can do it in Carolyn's office if uh, Jessica's is busy or we can use her. So if you could be in touch with the select board office um, as to when you would like to be coming in Thursday or Friday, that would really be helpful as far as our getting all of our ducks lined up and make sure that we don't miss any lines and, and get it all set. Okay?
Perfect. All right.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you all.
All right. Thank you. All right. Kathy Tudren, are you still here?
Yes, I am.
All right. So uh, Hopkins, uh, Edward Hopkins Foundation, tell us what uh, you have for us this evening.
Okay, um, I'm Kathy Tudren. I'm president of the Edward Hopkins Educational Foundation. And uh, we are um, in our fourth year of giving grants to the teachers at Hadley Elementary and Hopkins Academy for materials and curriculum issues uh, that they cannot get through their regular budget process. Um, the foundation has accumulated books and materials relevant to the history of Hopkins and also to the history of the town. We need a place that would allow the public access to view what we have as well as a place that people could donate any books, yearbooks, newspaper articles and so on, that would add to the present collection. We did have a room at the historical society for a brief period of time, but we were asked to vacate it as they needed the space for themselves. Another issue there was it's not handicapped accessible and our room was on the second floor. Since then, the items have been stored first at Hooker School and we then moved them to Goodman Library. We'll soon have to remove them from Goodman Library. So all of this time, approximately two years now, folks have not been able to have access or to see these items. During the three hundred and fiftieth celebration of Hopkins Academy in two thousand fourteen, the three hundred and fiftieth committee had a souvenir store that was located in town hall. It was the first room on the left as you entered the building. This would be a perfect spot for us since it's located on the first floor and is also handicapped accessible. We would establish set days and hours for opening as well as leave contact information. As some of the town offices relocate to the Goodman Library upon completion of renovation, we respectfully ask that you consider our requests for space in town hall. Thank you.
Yeah, I attended their meeting last week, I think it was.
Yes, it was, David.
I, I think it's something we should entertain and granted, it's probably a year or so out by the time the Goodman remodeling is finished. But I think the current park and rec office or something similar would be good to allow people to come in and take a look at yearbooks and, and things like that during business hours. So, and, and have access. The only other option would be the library itself if there's room, but from my understanding, that's not something that the library wanted to entertain at this time. So I don't know what the thoughts are from the rest of the board and.
I think if renovations might take place at Goodwin, we don't really have anything designated over at Goodwin, and that's handicap accessible coming up the ramp for the first floor. Certainly there might be some jiggling of rooms and things, and if they put the elevator in, that would certainly be helpful to be accessible. And also, you know, let's see what happens with who moves over there from town hall. So I, I certainly think that it's a, a good idea to have this accessible to people. I like that idea. So whether it be in our own town hall right now or at the Goodwin, I think, you know, we could make that work for them.
Thank you.
Is this anything that could be online instead of in person? I mean, is it something where you could have an online store that then people just go to and?
Probably, in all honesty.
I just don't know how many people would be going in and out of something in town hall, you know?
In all honesty, that's nothing we have thought about, truthfully. I think that when we were at the historical society, there was a lot of interest and some of the materials, and if you need, if you'd like to see them, we're certainly willing to share. But there are things that date back almost a hundred years now. Some of them such as scorebooks, scorebooks from baseball games and basketball games with people's names, you know, that would be familiar, probably people's relatives. To have that hands on, I think is something that would appeal to people. But I appreciate it in consideration that you would give us. That would be wonderful. Thank you. I do want to add one more thing. Many of you are familiar with the lights at the gazebo. And we will be doing that again. We will be lighting the tree that is in memory of Peter Winesick. We'll be doing that the Saturday after Thanksgiving. Certainly it's not going to be the community affair that it has been for the last three years because we're not able to do that at this time. But that will be lit up and we feel that that's going to sort of be a highlight driving down Route nine for that period of time. We usually leave it on until the middle of January. So I just want to give you a heads up about that. Thank you.
So that's going to be live streamed this year because of COVID, right?
That's right. I forgot that, David. Thank you for mentioning it. Yes, Hadley Media has volunteered to livestream it also.
Yeah, I, I think we all need at this time of our lives a little light. And I think it would be great to have that on Route nine. I, I really think that would be a great thing. Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome. Thank you, people. Thank you for having me.
Come again.
We'll, we'll make sure that as soon as the remodeling is done, you have a home and hopefully it'll be a permanent home. So that way you don't have to keep moving artifacts and articles. So.
That would be great. Really appreciate it.
All right. Well, thank you, Kathy. All right. So then we're going to jump on to the next item, which is North Lane. So the chief, chief can get out of here. And this conversation has been apparently going on for a long time. And at one point, there was talk of making the road a dead end. There's been talk about one ways, speed bumps, on and on and on. As most of you probably noticed today, West Street was milled, meaning the pavement was ground down and all of West Street will be repaved later this month. So this kind of intensifies the conversation of how do we stop people from A, cutting through and putting wear and tear and maintenance responsibility on the town when they should be staying on Route nine and forty seven and letting the state pay for it? And also, how do we cut down on massive amount of speeding that's happening down North Lane and West Street? There is a traffic study attached to this item, this agenda item. And you'll notice that there's really basically five, six hundred cars a day cutting down North Lane. And I'm, I'm willing to bet that maybe ten of those are actually residents that live on West Street or North Lane. So chief, if you want to jump in, feel free, but in my mind, I'd like to try a one-way eastbound temporarily for a three or six month trial to see how that affects things. And then we can always look at speed bumps later on. The issue with speed bumps is obviously they're permanent. We can't put out the plastic temporary ones because of the, they're pretty harsh on vehicles and they certainly won't last with snowplows. So.
So Dave, David, I have, I have one thing on that. You want to go east. I'm, I was looking to have no traffic turn left. We've had so many accidents at Echelon turning onto West Street to go and go up northeast. I thought it would be easier if we kept the flow of the traffic all one way. You said something about we had talked to DOT or we put in a request to DOT to no left-hand turns on Route nine, period.
Correct. Yep. I, I spoke with their district two rep and the guy actually attended UMass and said, boy, that would have been nice when I was going to, to and from UMass every day and, you know, getting cut off by people making left-hand turns. So he's on our side. He did say it has to be reviewed by a traffic engineer, which who knows how long that'll take. I asked him about what about those sticks, you know, those things that stick up in the middle of the road to keep people from turning like they have up on Route two and, and two oh two places like that? And he said, actually, those are going away statewide because they're such a maintenance nightmare. So he said, really, your only options would be a concrete barrier in the middle, which he said is extremely unlikely to go there and it would just detract from the common if we put that there. Or just simply no left-hand turn signs, and then that would be on the police department unfortunately to enforce those no left turns there.
Ching, ching, ching.
Yeah.
Yes.
I did run by the fire chief, well, could we dead end Cross Path Road? And cut down, you know, everybody goes on North Lane, West Street cuts down Cemetery Road and then over to the bridge that way. He said that would be detrimental to ambulance response time and response time to Honey Pot. So that's not an option.
So I had a, a different thought about Cemetery Road, and that is we had talked about making it one-way eastbound with the exception of farm vehicles which can go two ways.
You can't go eastbound because you can't turn onto.
Exactly. So there will be no traffic coming onto it. And then if Newton Lane is eastbound, nobody's going to cut across.
Not Newton.
I'm sorry, north, north is eastbound. Nobody's going to cut across to take the back road, so to speak. And the issue was farmers won't like it, but we just exempted farm equipment.
Chief, is that a, is that a possibility? Is that enforcement nightmare?
Totally. Yeah, I'll be, I'll be completely honest with you. It's an absolute enforcement nightmare no matter how we slice it unless you put speed tables in. Speed tables are the only option that do not require, they won't require enforcement. And I understand it's, it's not a great thing for our plows. The folks that we're looking to inconvenience are the speeders and they are going in both directions on the roads and on that road. And slow them down going both directions. I know it's a costly thing to do, but in thirty seconds, we just had six different ideas pop up on what roads we should adjust, which way they should be one way, whether we should exempt people or not. You know, what happens if a farm pickup truck is driving down the road the wrong way with farm plates? Do we allow them or do we only allow tractors? I mean, I don't want to go down the rabbit hole on, you know, all of these problems we're going to have. And the, the other issue is, is, you know, even if you put speed tables and on North Lane, there's a possibility that you're just simply going to divert traffic onto railroad. But the hope is, is that we push it back onto Route nine where it belongs and they that way to get, like you said, David, these are your folks who are going through Hadley. They're not living in Hadley. And I just, my concern is that if you make it one way, folks who are not just farmers, but folks who are just trying to get to the dump or, you know, just do their daily stuff are going to have to rearrange, you know, how they're driving. And, and we're going to be inconveniencing our own, our own town people at the expense of, you know, the people who we want to inconvenience. And anything except for speed tables is going to be an enforcement nightmare. We're going to have to have cops out there. I mean, all day, every day for months. Enforcing.
How much are speeding tickets? Can we make some money for the town here?
Well, yeah, but I mean, that's, the, the idea is not to let them go down that road. So they're not going to be speeding on the road if we're turning them around and sending them some other direction. That's, that's completely separate from the argument. So it's a tough one.
What about, what about?
Cross path, if you look at Cross Path Road, we, we argued with Mass DOT to adjust that intersection off of Route nine because it's been a no turn there for a decade or more. We actually got them to put extra signage in and then finally the turn. So it was even harder to make that turn and we're still, we still deal with issues with people.
They still turn.
Block traffic and they still make the turn. So.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, well, you know, like I said, it's, it's not an easy one. And I apologize that you have to make the decision, but the, the volume of cars, honestly, the, the speeds are worrisome. Cars that travel on that road is outrageous. I, I was, I was shocked by it.
Yeah.
Those folks down is, is, is really the goal in both directions.
Yeah.
So.
I, I used to live on that, on Cemetery Road and I lived right around the corner from North Lane. So I just know that making that one way on Cemetery Road would be difficult because if you lived there, I mean, you're pretty close to West Street. I would violate that one way thing all the time because to get anywhere in Hadley, you'd have to go all the way around to major Route nine traffic to then get back to Echelon or something like that. So that would be one problem, but I think the speed tables would be better. Just, I, I feel like that's going to deter people over time. We're making it one way. I, I just am scared there's going to be people very confused about what's going on and there's going to be traffic turning around and all kinds of stuff. I mean, it's going to be confusing there making it one way. So I'd be for trying the speed tables before directional only.
If the speedway is going to be West Street, are we talking about speed bumps on that? Are you only talking about Newton Lane?
North Lane.
North Lane, I'm sorry.
I, I think realistically it's going to have to be North Lane because the, I, I don't think due to the historic nature of the common, people want speed bumps or speed tables there. And if we can realistically inconvenience people enough to not take the cut through there on North Lane, I think that'll also eliminate the West Street speeding problem at the same time.
No, I, I agree with you, David, a hundred percent. And, and the other thing that I would just add to that is a lot of what we're seeing, especially, you know, speeding, the reason that we started this study is, is actually titled elementary school traffic study because the, you know, not only people speeding on that road, but they're going that way past the elementary school, past our kids, and they're humming when they're, when they're doing it. And they're going on Rocky Hill after that. And it was another hotspot where we get a lot of speeding complaints and we're trying to figure something out. The idea is there are certain algorithms with any of our map, of the GPS mapping systems, Google Maps or any of the, any of your, your, your Garmin GPS or whatever it is, that time will see that it's much slower to go that way than to simply take Route nine. There is a possibility, and I certainly can't make this promise, but there's a possibility and a hope that the algorithms will change so much that eventually Google Maps will stop telling people to go that way. And we could be able to remove them at some point. I mean, I don't know how that works. I can't, I'm not a scientist in that area. I know people at Mass DOT, we could ask. But, you know, that's a possibility and that's kind of what we're trying to do is get all that traffic off of West Street, off of North Lane, off of Middle Street, off of Rocky Hill. Even if you can take half of it, it's a win.
What, Mike, how, how did you feel about no left-hand turn on Route nine?
I don't know how you would do that. Mass DOT would have to approve it. Route nine is a main thoroughfare. I, I spoke with the fire chief today about David's idea with those, those flippy, those floppy guards there. I don't know how that would, I don't know that they would approve something like that. I don't, I don't know how it would work. And essentially what it would be is if people wanted to turn there, you're, you're just forcing them into oncoming traffic. If they're still, if they still really want to turn there. So, you know, like I said, I, I will, I will enforce this however the, the board votes. I just feel like there's a lot of variables involved. Everybody has a, a different idea, different nuance in, in the way to do it. And the only one that's kind a simple solve all is the, the speed tables. And, you know, if you look at some of the comments that David got on his Facebook post when he, when he asked for comments, a lot of our town residents are saying that they're driving down these roads at twenty-five miles an hour just to irritate the speeders behind them. So cables aren't going to bother our, our residents because they're going speed that you're going over those things. So it depends.
Just so people know what speed tables are, basically if you look up an isosceles trapezoid, it's, that, that is, is what it is, or just type speed table in Google. And so it has sloped sides with a flat top on it. And it is, they're quite a bit wider, larger than a speed bump. So they'll still launch you through the air if you hit it too fast, but they're a little bit nicer on vehicles and snowplows.
Amherst putting them in on all their side streets.
Yeah, I was going to say, go to Amherst and take a left off of Amity Street toward UMass and you'll experience some speed tables.
Lincoln Avenue, all those small ones that go in between Amity and North Hampton Road have them all on it. I am for the speed bumps, not for putting one-way traffic anywhere. The farmers have got to go around. It's six to eight months of farming season. They can't get their tractors in and out. They can't get their produce in and out. They're not going to be going around. We can't be putting farmers out that far out and to go around. I know there's, there's a farmer right on West Street and I don't know if he's watching or not, but he'll probably see this. Rex has a hell of a time crossing Route nine and we've been saying we needed a light on West Street for a long time. You know, he's coming from one side of West Street to the other to go down to his property down on Honey Pot. And it's just hard for them to get through with a tractor. Pickup is one thing, but you know, they're, that's all their firm equipment.
Yeah, and I, I got cut off at at the beginning there. Did you say you were for speed bumps or not? I, I missed that. Yeah, and I, I got cut off at, at the beginning there. Did you say you were for speed bumps or not? I, I missed that.
I, I am for the speed bumps. I am not for any one-way streets in Hadley at all.
What about those, um, you know, North Street and North Hampton by Slusniak's and down that way? Uh, you can't go flying over those bumps that are on those roads. I'll tell you that right now.
That's what we're talking about, Joyce. Just like that. Same thing Amherst has.
Yeah, I, I thought you were talking about like, uh, the temporary ones they put up, like they, well, I saw them up in Hampton Beach that, you know, they were metal and they were on the, on the side street. So this is real actual, uh, gravel, uh, coprobio, uh, pump.
Yep, these are all tar in place and, and they're set. The plows can go over them without much trouble. And there, there really ain't much to maintain them.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of those. I've seen those. I use that all in, that way all the time in North Hampton.
Chief, you had something else?
Just one more thing that I just wanted to, to caution the board about is, and as I mentioned, you know, I have my opinion on this. We'll enforce whichever direction you go, but if you go in the direction of speed bumps, speed tables, whatever you wanna call them, you really need to consider setting some, some type of standard, um, for when you're gonna do this. Because I, we had, you know, ever, you all, we have speed problems on, on a bunch of different roads in town and we're doing speed studies in other areas. Um, you just need to kind of set a bar, the high watermark for where you're gonna say it's okay to do this. Where you're gonna say, we're gonna try other measures first because we don't want speed. We also don't, like John said, he doesn't want any one-way streets anywhere in Hadley. We, we don't want speed bumps on twelve different streets in Hadley either. So, um.
If, if needed, Mike, if, you know, and you know.
All I'm saying, right. So all I'm saying is, is just kind of set a standard and, and decide what, you know, where you're gonna say yes and where you're gonna say no is, is all I'm, just making a suggestion.
Yeah. I, I know Rocky Hill has been a, a constant request for speed bumps there, but the, the problem is, is that gets into response time for vehicles because it is a main road to and from Amherst. And so having to slow down to go over, you know, a hundred speed bumps down Rocky Hill, uh, is detrimental. It's the same reason we can't dead-end North Lane is because the, the fire chief says it's, it's too detrimental to response time. So, um, I mean, I mean, I think we could make that argument to someone to say, why, why aren't you putting speed bumps on Rocky Hill?
I, I think they need them and Mike, you can chime in on it. I think they need them near the school. Um, you can start with Rocky Hill, uh, coming towards the center of town and a couple of speed bumps that way and then a couple going towards the school. You know, I think the police have a, have a time controlling these people that are flipping along there in front of the school, the school itself, don't you?
Well, yeah, we actually have an officer out in, out there every morning when, uh, the buses show up because, because of the.
Yeah.
There. I, I'm pretty sure that Mitch has, uh, some studies that we've done in the past right in front of. I can dig those up and, and, uh, we can analyze them and, and send them off to you folks and see what you think. If we don't have, still have them in their, in the computer system for the speed boards, we'll, we'll run it.
Mike, have you, uh, have you surveyed on North Hampton or Amherst, um, as to when they put theirs in? And what sort of, uh, traffic count they had when, once they put them in?
No, no, I haven't, John. I haven't. I just assumed that their tra, the traffic was, uh, you know, fast enough and, and voluminous enough that, that they required them. I would be shocked, to be quite honest with you, of some of those. Um, I, I think you'd be surprised at how close this tiny little road comes to collecting the same amount of traffic as some of those ones that they have in, in Amherst.
Yeah.
One in North Hampton, but in Amherst, I think some of those streets, this would rival that as far as volume goes.
All right. So could we motion please to, uh, have the DPW investigate this further? And, uh, if it's financially feasible to install, uh, speed tables on North Lane?
Moved.
Yep. Second.
Any further discussion on speed tables?
No, I, I'd like Railroad Street too.
Can we do one at a time?
Joyce, stop signs up there now halfway. So they, uh, they gotta, they gotta stop. And I see the cruiser's been sitting there. I don't know how many people they've actually caught at those stop signs not stopping.
Yeah, they do, they do blow through there. You know that.
Yeah.
Stop signs are nice though.
The only reason I say one at a time is because obviously money's tight this year and.
Yeah, that's fine. Let's do one at a time. We'll see how, and then you can actually see how the other street fares and we can do a count on that to see how, if they cut first there and then skip North Street. You know what I mean?
Yep.
I have a question about Mike's comment about, so somebody calls up and says, okay, you put speed bumps there. I want them in front of my house. What is going to be our requirement?
Gonna let the DPW decide that.
And we're the traffic commissioners. So ultimately it comes before the select board to say yes or no. And it could be due to response times or emergency vehicles. It could be traffic flow. There's, uh, the chief probably knows better than I do, but there, there's a variety of factors we could use to say yes or no.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's gonna be a combination of everyone, police chief, fire chief, ourselves and DPW.
Yes.
And we'll, we'll also, we'll also u- utilize the, uh, you know, data as well. You know, we can, we can put the boards up and we can actually gather statistics and, and use all the factors you just named along with, um, the data to, for you all to make that decision.
Basically, basically it seems like it's a ratio of the amount of traffic that's going down this road versus the amount of people that live there. And, you know, here, uh, North Lane, it's like, there's a specific amount of people that live on that road, yet we're getting Route Nine levels of traffic along that road. So there's something to the rationale that we're doing it where it's like, it's not really a major thoroughfare. We're redirecting traffic to the major thoroughfares that can handle that amount of traffic, given how many people live on the road.
Correct.
Actually, you're not even close. You said five hundred cars going down that road right now.
Between four, four and six hundred on an average day.
All right, and that's in both directions?
I believe so.
And there, the last count on Route Nine, I believe was somewhere around forty thousand cars a day. So that, that's, there's nowhere near Route Nine, so.
Well, don't forget.
Maybe Rick Forty-seven.
Yeah, but don't forget we're in COVID right now. Not everybody is up and running and going to UMass or Amherst right now.
Yeah, that, and, and this survey was done, remind me, Chief, I think it was August into September.
September.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and one of the sides, we've, one of the, one of the directions, we actually amount of, uh, readings because I thought this hearing was gonna be much sooner. So we, we had it out there for like maybe a week and a half. So one of them have a month's worth and the other one you'll have, you know, maybe fourteen days, fifteen days. It's impressive. I mean, it's, it's, it may not be Route Nine numbers, but it's, it's impressive for that road.
All right. Mike, is, is that Route Nine number still fairly correct, that forty thousand cars a day?
Uh, the last I saw, yeah, between forty and fifty.
Okay.
Uh, maybe not now, as Joyce mentioned, maybe not now with COVID, but, you know, those numbers.
Because they, they did. Yeah, they did those studies through phase one of Route Nine, through phase two of Route Nine. And I think they have, the last one was in preparation for the last phase of Route Nine.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, so we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right, good enough. And, uh, we're gonna move on to special town meeting warrant right now per, uh, the request of the, um, of Randy Iser. Uh, we'd like to pare down this warrant as much as possible, uh, due to COVID and also due to the fact that this is, uh, per the unified command, this is now going to be held at the fire, uh, the public safety station rather than in the school. So, um, it may be cold and it may be rainy. So we can get about sixty-ish people inside the emergency bays, uh, with the fire trucks out of there. So there will be some room for, um, you know, people to get out of the weather and be under the, the heaters that are on the ceiling. But still, we want to make it as short, as short and sweet as possible. So, uh, let me pull up the warrant here. Soon as it opens. And, uh, David Nixon or Carolyn, can you talk a little bit about what our options are as far as removing some of the CPA items? And what are the other options you're, you're, uh, looking at removing from the warrant here?
So David Nixon here, um, uh, based upon the reconfiguration of the budget, I think it's pretty safe to say that we don't need Article Seven, the transfers to capital stabilization, general stabilization. So that one can be removed. Uh, the capital article, we can remove the twenty thousand dollars for the, um, uh, in Article Eight, we can remove the twenty thousand dollars for the, uh, the IT for the select board office. We, uh, submitted a grant that last week for IT through the community compact, uh, grant program. And, uh, I feel pretty confident that we'll get that. So that'll cut down on one of the seven motions in that one article. Uh, I talked to Chris Okafor about the West Street Common CPA Article Number Thirteen. And he agreed that we should pull it, uh, and, uh, and line it up for the annual town meeting.
And then, uh, what about Article Eighteen? I think we're gonna pass on Russell School Article Ninety-seven. Uh, petitioning that to be removed for now.
Okay.
We can pull that one off. And then I'd also like to pull off, uh, Fourteen for now as well since that's gonna probably take a long time to talk about, uh, on town meeting floor alone. And then, uh, I, I would, I know this may be a little bit controversial, but the stretch energy code, I think that needs to stay on here to line us up for the green communities', uh, funding potential. If we don't do this now, that's gonna push us off, you know, another year.
Do we, do we need to open the warrant to do that?
No.
No.
It is still, but I thought.
Nah, I thought we closed it.
Yeah, you, but, uh, you can, you can, it's your, your warrant at this point. So you can amend it however you wish.
You're asking what Article Fourteen is? Um, if someone could tell them, please?
The Board of Health article.
The Board of Health article.
Yeah, I think if we just get whatever we need for, uh, for the debt exclusions and for the budget, I think that will shorten the, the special town meeting up and, and get us out of there pretty quickly.
The CPA articles, is it possible to, um, I see Allen's here, uh, from the cemetery committee. Is it possible to combine those three into one article just for time's sake? Is that, is that a possibility?
You fine with me. I don't know whether it's, is, is it legally possible?
David and Carolyn, is that a possibility?
Yeah, we would need the CPA to, uh, give its blessing for that. They're meeting on Monday, I think.
Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
Can we make that, or Andy's here. So, um, yeah, can we make that request of CPA, um, just for time's sake?
I'll be attending the meeting and, uh, I'll bring it up. I think the, um, the CPA article about COVID rental relief, uh, that relief's vitally needed. And I think that one should remain if possible. So I'll talk to them about combining all of them into one article.
You're talking about all the, all the cemetery ones?
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll ask him.
I, I don't think the cemetery one's gonna take that long anyway, even if they're done individually.
I think people have been pretty supportive of the cemetery.
Exactly. I think that they're all gonna pass fairly easily.
All right. So which ones are we keeping for CPA? Are we getting rid of that pavilion thing? Or is that, what's the pavilion for? The town, uh, West Street?
The common is off.
Okay, common is off. Is the Turca Park, is that on or off? It's a Turca Park.
I don't believe there was a Turca Park CPA article.
Uh, funding deficit. We need to keep that on.
Okay, that was the, that, I see that here. It's number fifteen, it's a Turca Park.
Which one are you on, Joyce?
Uh, it was the Turca Park unless I'm, I don't know, I'm back, hey, I'm at, I'm at the Springtown meeting. Aren't I up to date here? Wow.
You already noted that down, Joyce. Relax.
Didn't your board docs?
Oh, yes. Well, okay, keep going. I got it here somewhere. Okay.
David, why don't you run us from the top here, just so we make sure we're all on the same page? Cause we're gonna.
Article one is, uh, uh, two, two twenty prior year bills for about thirty-six hundred dollars. Article two is the general fund budget and we're showing a decrease right now of a hundred and fifty-six thousand eight hundred dollars. I need to, uh, work with Dan Zadonik to confirm that number. Uh, Article three is the fund balance transfers. This is a housekeeping article. Um, number four is the revolving fund for the electronic permits for the building inspection department. Again, with that's housekeeping. Uh, number five is the account transfers for cost overrun with the Turca Park for a thousand four hundred ten dollars. Uh, number six is the modification of exemption of taxes for qualifying seniors, uh, proposed by the assessors. Number seven is out. Number eight, capital budget, uh, two hundred and forty-six thousand eight, uh, twenty-five. There's no impact on taxes for any of that, by the way. All that borrowing is within the levy, not, uh, not debt excluded.
Okay.
All right, Article. Article nine is the first CPA of, uh, articles before a hundred thousand for the emergency rental relief for COVID, uh, nineteen. Articles ten, eleven and twelve are the three CPA, um, cemetery, uh, um, projects. Thirteen has been withdrawn, fourteen has been withdrawn, fifteen and sixteen are planning board amendments to the zoning. And seventeen is a stretch energy code. Eighteen is gone.
The, the, uh, the planning board chair, Jim's here. Uh, Jim, are you, is planning ready to move on fifteen and sixteen for this meeting?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so we'll keep those?
Yeah, there'll be probably a small amendment for one of them, but it'll be a minor thing that won't affect anything.
Can we do the consent, the housekeeping articles as a consent agenda? All at once?
They are.
I can set them up as consent.
That would save a little time.
About ten minutes. Yep.
All right. So what does that, what does that bring us down to?
You have fourteen articles at this point. Uh, if you combine, uh, three, three CPA into one, that's, uh, uh, twelve articles. If we do the two consent, that's ten articles.
And this sounds doable.
All right. So do we need to vote on, is Randy here? I don't see Randy. Uh, do we need to vote on the location and time and date at this point?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept, uh, the fire station as, uh, approved by our emergency manager, uh, Chief Spankenable to have town meeting there inside and out.
Which, which, which station?
At the fire station in.
The main, main station.
Main station, main station.
And it, it'll be November fourteenth at one PM.
One PM on a Saturday.
Correct.
Okay.
So we have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second from Christian. Any further discussion on location, time and date?
Now, let's just advertise.
Yeah, I'd still like to take that, the rest of that capital off, even though it's, uh, no, no effect on taxes. We're gonna need every penny we can right now.
We have, I, I guess our last chance to make that, that change will be next week by next week's meeting. So we can, we can certainly talk about that.
Or, or even on the floor, we could pass over it. I mean, if it comes down to that.
Yeah, let's look, let's look. Yeah, let's look, let's look at it, John C. Can I have a minute to do that? Till next week?
Oh, yeah, we can wait till next week.
Okay.
Sure, Joyce. Just make sure you're reading the right one.
I got it right in front of me now. I'm all set, John.
Yeah, and and there was some stuff there on capital that is needed. I know, like for the fire department, the, um. Extrication airbags.
Yeah.
That's something that was on last year that didn't pass. So and something they need replacement for. And then a couple of things are. Like standard things we've been doing all along, which should be more routine. So I'm hoping we can keep at least a majority of those on if possible.
Yeah, that's why I want to take a chance to look at it and make sure that we're not missing something that we should. Thank you.
Um, all right. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. And just as an update, the, um, it looks like we're still working on tax rate. And this is a work in progress and no promises, but I do want to say thank you to, uh, Dr. McKenzie and the school committee. For giving back three hundred seventy-five thousand in unused funds, uh, from their school committee last, meeting last week. Um, it's, it's a big help toward, uh, either keeping people's tax bills the same or less, which is what we're trying to do throughout this year, even with the, the change in. You know, meals tax and hotels taxes and things like that. So I'll just give this preliminary number. Uh, right now, our tax rate is twelve sixty-four, and we're looking at a possibility of it dropping to twelve twelve for next year. The bad news is the values of everybody's houses went up by something like six percent last year, if if I'm quoting this right. I see. Uh, Dan's here, but, um. So we need to. Find some money in order to have people pay the same bill, even though the rates dropped, the values went up. So that's what we're working with here.
Well, I don't have a mansion, so mine's not going up.
That's what you think.
Wait till you get your bill.
I know. We'll wait. Thank you.
All right. So we're all set with that. Let's. All right. All right. So we'll go back to public comments. Um.
I'm, I'm sorry, there's a public hearing that started at seven o'clock.
Oh. So and then we'll come back to public comments. And. Is the person here for the public hearing?
Um, Christie Bowden is the attorney for, um, the Mullen Center. Christie, are you here? Um, she told me that she would be attending the meeting this evening. Christie? Okay, um, so I don't believe she's here. Um.
Does she need to be?
I would, I was really hoping that she would explain this to y'all, but, um. I will, I will lead it my best, and then y'all can make a decision from there. Or you can, I guess, continue the hearing, and we'll see if she had problems getting on or something. Um, the Mullen Center has requested that you do an alteration to their premises license. It's, uh. Top of the campus holds the liquor license at the Mullen Center. And the liquor license has always been for the Massachusetts room and the green room. And the storage rooms behind the green room. And then the rest of the Mullen Center, they have always. Pulled one day liquor licenses, um, for every event. Um, the ABCC has recommended to top of the campus that they get a catering license. Use the catering license for the two rooms. And then have their liquor license to be for the rest of the Mullen Center. Um, and so that is what they're coming to you for. Um, and I'm sorry that they're not here to discuss it further. What is this? Kristen, is that you? Kristen, Christie? Hello? Okay, I'm gonna mute them because I don't think that's her. So that, that is what they're asking for. They're asking to. Flip their liquor license to the rest of the Mullen Center. Um, and the ABCC has approved their catering license, so their catering license would be for the Massachusetts room and the green room.
So are we gonna take a hit on license fees since they're gonna have a, instead of a lot of one day?
So they're a tax exempt organization, and their one day licenses are twenty dollars to thirty-five dollars. A license. Um. I will say that doing the licenses takes me a lot of time. Um, but. I, I issue them probably dozens of licenses to that, to that location every year. But they already have an all alcohol license that they're gonna continue with. I don't really see it having a, a very large impact. They still have McGurk Stadium where they pull one days and, um. The Basketball Champions Center, so we're still gonna have one days from them. It just won't be as many.
I think, I think given the situation of where, um, their athletic program is, uh, not stable at this point. Um, as is many other colleges and whatnot. I think, uh. You know, these are just some of the things that we have to, uh, accept at this point, but I hopefully next year. Uh, things will pick up and they'll be different. So that's what we can always hope for. Um, they've been good to us with their one day licenses. I don't see that this is gonna present a problem, so I would make a motion to accept this.
I can second.
I'll second it.
So a motion by Joyce, second by Christian. Any further discussion on this? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much. Sorry to interrupt David like that, but when you advertise it, you gotta be precise.
Yep. No, I appreciate it. I missed that. So, all right. So we'll go back to public comments now, and, uh, let's just go over the quick little ground rules. Uh, we're allowing fifteen minutes and three minutes to per person. So if you'd like to make a public comment, wave, make yourself known. Shell Horwitz, go ahead.
Thank you, Kelly Phil. I want to say thank you to the board for shortening the. Warrant agenda for town meeting, for listening to the concerns of many people in town. Who were concerned that those most affected by certain decisions would be the ones most likely to stay home because of COVID in the current situation. Um, so I really appreciate that Article fourteen is not just showing up on the full warrant. But I would also suggest for the future that it would be a courtesy to the considerable number of us that showed up to this for the public hearing. Sorry, for the public comment. To let people know, I mean, it is now, we started the public comment. An hour and seven minutes after it was posted to be started, and I think it would be very nice. Sorry, no, ninety-seven minutes, an hour and a half plus. Uh, it would be nice to have known that going in, that we weren't going to be on the agenda for more than an hour and a half.
I think Shell, with, with all of the things that we had had, eh, um. Uh, things that we wanted to clear the air because we knew of concerns. Of people that wanted to make comments, but I think you needed to know ahead of time. Uh, of what we were planning or what we had thought we should do with the town meeting warrant. Um, so that would have made a difference in people's comments and things of that nature. Uh, those things had to get done first, uh, before we took comments, because I think it was fair to them to hear, uh, our comments about. Changing the town meeting and making things a little bit more expeditious, uh, for that meeting. So. Uh, sorry that it was an inconvenience for people, but I think, uh. It served everybody better that they heard what was going on instead of. You know, airing all of their concerns ahead of time before knowing what we were actually going to do.
I agree, Joyce. I just think that you could have said at the beginning of the meeting, public comment will be near the end and, uh, tune back in, um, at. Um, six thirty to hear a relevant discussion that you'll want to hear before the public comment, and then we would have all known that and been able to act accordingly.
Yes, taken, your, your thoughts taken well. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Um, yeah, I have a quick, uh, thank you for people who voluntarily withdrew their warrant articles. Know everything in town meeting is important. But public health has to, uh, trump everything, if I can coin a phrase. Um, so thank you very much for everybody being flexible, and we'll see you there.
All right. Thanks, Andy. Anybody else? Michelle? Uh, hang on one second. Let's get you unmuted. There we go.
I, I do have a concern about, um, town meetings being held at the Public Safety Complex with sixty people. I don't know if that's sixty people six feet apart. Um, I know that town meetings are being allowed to be held. With, um, a roughly half of a normal quorum because of COVID. At the same time, it's, um. A much smaller number than usually appears, uh, town meetings. I've concerned about the small. Number of people, and I for one would be willing to stand outdoors in the rain, in the cold. And have possibly more people come. I also have a lot of concerns about any indoor meeting because. Indoor air is the issue. Um, with COVID. I mean, it, um. In, in, indoor air is the major risk factor for COVID and, um. I think it's a tough thing to ask people to do, to choose between their health and possibly their life and their involvement with the town that they. Care deeply about.
Yeah, uh, Michelle, I, I should have been more clear. Um, it, it's going to be, although it's going to be in the, partially in the equipment bays. Uh, there's also gonna be most of the seating outside. Really, we're just using the equipment area for those that need the benefit of the heaters that are in the ceiling there. The garage door bays, from my understanding, will be open. Um, so it's basically gonna be open on two of the four sides. Uh, just kind of like some of the outdoor restaurant seating areas. And according to the fire chief, when those bay doors are open, it's basically a wind tunnel. So for all intensive purposes, even the people that are in there, although they'll be under the, the heaters, they will be out. Outside or as, as close to as possible. So and and we're not gonna limit to sixty-five people. We'll still have plenty of seating for, you know, a hundred fifty, two hundred people that want to show up. It's just some people will have to sit outside versus under the heaters.
Yeah, we're still staying a number of a hundred, correct?
Correct.
We need a hundred, yes.
And I think, and I think we should sit outside.
I don't care where I sit. I'll sit outside. Don't bother me at all.
Okay, um, are, are we going to have a mask policy? And do we have? A way of dealing with people who refuse to wear masks, who don't have a medical condition that makes it difficult to wear a mask?
Everybody has to wear a mask. This is, this is the policy. Board of Health, CDC, whatever. If you're gonna go to the meeting, you wear a mask. If you're gonna sit anywhere within anywhere, even of six feet. Of people with whatever. Everybody has a mask unless they have a medical condition, and then we will try to make accommodations for those people. And I'm sure Mike. Has already thought about those things.
Yeah, the, the fire chief has, um, we'll put out more details next week, but he's working on a plan. He, he had a whole, like, um. Quarantine room set up for those that refused to wear masks, and we were gonna do it inside so they could be in the cafeteria versus people that would, you know, wear masks in the gym. So I'm sure he'll come up with some solution that'll be, uh, great for everybody. And I think, uh, Dr. Moser's here. Did you want to chime in at all on the? Health aspect of the, the meeting that we talked about today?
I, yeah, the, um, the sheltered seating, uh, there will be, uh. You know, dis- social distancing, masks will be required. Um, and, you know, again, there, there is inherent risk. Uh, in any gathering. So, uh, the Board of Health, uh, strongly supports the vote that just happened to, uh. To, uh, shorten the agenda and, uh. You know, we would suggest just have as many people as needed for a quorum, get the necessary business done. And, uh, hopefully we'll be better positioned in the spring. We'll see. Um, can I add, Susan, that one of the things that we do. At my place of employment, which is, uh, Cooley Dix CMG Orthopedics, is that. Anybody that has concerns, uh, we are have, we as professionals have to wear, uh, eye protectant. Um, that is one of the things that they suggest. So if anybody wants to. Wear a face shield that's more than thought of to cover the eyes or whatever. Um, they could also do that if they felt more comfortable, uh, in doing that coming to the meeting. Do you, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, you mean a mask and a face shield.
Uh, yes, if, or, or, or glass, a glass protectant. Uh, some eye wear, if people felt like they wanted to do that, they could also do that.
They could.
Uh. Did I cut you off, or did you have more, Michelle?
No, that was good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then, uh, Kenneth Talan is embraced as well. Kenneth?
Thank you. So this is the first, uh, select board that I've sat in on, and I'm very appreciative of the thoughtfulness that everybody approaches to different problems. I was very impressed. Uh, and to clarify something for myself, the discussion of how the Board of Health will be. Addressed in terms of either elected or chosen. That issue has been put off till a time of a larger meeting later. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And don't be a stranger to our meetings, sir.
I'll come back. It's very interesting, very interesting.
I think they're great. All right, uh, who else had a hand up? Uh, Lynn Boaster?
Yeah, um, I'm glad to hear that, that decision was made about taking, uh, um, warrant off for the time being and considering it later, whatever steps they're gonna take. And it sounds like a pretty good, um, arrangement for the town meeting. Uh, we came into it late, so my question is just, is there? How many people will conceivably be. Is inside together? Like, what's the limit on that?
So the chief said that it was, I believe, sixty-five was what they could fit in there socially distanced. Inside the bays, and everybody else would have to be outside the bays and, and seats outside.
Uh-huh. And then there's, there, the bays are open. Is there any airflow like on the other side of it?
Yeah, uh, his description was when the doors are open, it basically creates a wind tunnel. So there's constant air.
Wind tunnel. I didn't hear. Uh-huh. Got it. All right. Looks, looks like a good plan.
He said when they need to clean out the garage, they just open the doors and the wind blows it out for them.
Yeah.
Into the papers yard, so.
Yeah, there's, there's two doors on the west side of the building, and there's three doors on the east side of the building, and the west wind comes through there. And it, it just, it, it's fresh air all the time when you have the doors open throughout the summer.
That's a key thing. Thank you.
Uh, anybody else for comments? There's no name on your photo, but, uh. The lady with.
I'm sorry.
There you go.
Yeah, it should have said Margaret Mascherangelo. Thank you. This is my first town meeting as well. And I really, um, I'm just glad that the decision regarding the Board of Health, whether it's appointed or elected, has been postponed because I think this. You know, it's, it's too big of an issue to, um, to try to deal with tonight. And so, um. Yeah, I'm glad that, uh, you know, we'll have more time to discuss this more fully, and I'm, um. At this point, happy that, um, Dr. Mosler is continuing, you know, her good work and, um. And I think that the plan, as someone else said, about keeping those bay window, uh, those bay doors open is, is great because it certainly makes me feel safer. Um, to come to one of the meetings. So, thank you.
And anybody else? Okay. I think that's it. Jennifer, did I miss anybody? Okay.
I don't, I don't believe so. Sorry, I muted myself.
Okay, so we'll keep moving on here. Um. Go ahead.
Good. Well, Mrs. Modular's on, um, the email about the UMass, uh. Person, uh, point person.
We're, we have that on for, for next week, because we, we have a bit more. We're, we have that on for, for next week because we, we have a bit more details. But I, I promise her that we'll uh, we'll invite her back next week to talk all she wants about uh...
Well, I mean, just make sure that someone from, from our board or someone contacts UMass and see, see what the deal is to get someone put on it.
Yep. Okay. All right, moving down the line here, uh, Russell School Solicitation of Letters of Interest. Uh, the Select Board will discuss issuing, issuing a solicitation of letters of interest from prospective developers for the Russell School. And so there is a example solicitation here attached. Uh, Carolyn, do you want to talk a little bit about this?
Sure. Um, this was, this was a document that uh David and Alan worked on and uh is basically a letter of interest of reuse for that building. Anything from housing to uh, it kind of just threw out a few ideas. But the intent of the letter of interest is to find out what some creative letters of interest would come back to us. With that, we would produce a request for proposal using the framework of some of those letters of interest to see what was out there. So this would like to do, I, I would suggest thinking about having a due date for, I think December fourth would be the first week in December. That would give us enough time to review the letters and put a proposal together and have it ready for annual town meeting.
So would, would this be posted in the paper or in the MMA magazine or where are we, where are we putting this?
I, I think it's, we were talking, I know Jennifer, we were talking about that. Um, I know there's a list, but there, we would be, you know, sending it out to as many resources that obviously the history here with David and Jennifer and others would have that I would utilize to get that out.
I, I, I did have one question about the letter. Um, and I'm not sure if they would be. I have a little problem with that, that a letter of interest uh for outside concerns, which would make them not have to follow the uh guidelines of, that we have for um paying prevailing wages. Um, so anybody that would take over that building, they would have a better um number to deal with, to do it. Where we're looking at thirty million, theirs would be less. How would they be in line for any communit- uh, community preservation funds uh being an outside concern? How would that happen? I'm not, I wasn't sure on that.
Well, the letters of interest and, and um, if, if uh David wants to bring in some of his history and knowledge into that aspect of it. But the letter of interest isn't committing anybody to that project. It's, it's, it's gaining interest of someone who thinks they might meet the criteria. Alan, David, I don't know if you want to add anything else that can answer Joyce better?
Yeah, we're just, just trying to be transparent. If the developer was relying upon the community to provide a lot of dollars through CPA, then that portion of the work would be subject to prevailing wage. So we just want to put people on notice that if we're, if you're looking for public money as a, as a, in a partnership, um, the price. Um, we're not saying that that's actually going to happen. It all depends on the exact um configuration of the project, which we don't know at this point. But we're just giving, giving everybody fair warning.
But uh, uh, just bear with me, David, and, and set me straight here, that somebody from um outside of the town not being in, they wouldn't have access to our community preservation funds, correct?
No, they would.
Why would they? I, I'm, I'm asking David, Alan, not you.
Sorry.
You have, you have set a precedent by giving like CPA money to an outfit in Northampton.
By, by being the um courthouse?
Uh, not the courthouse, uh, the uh Oliver Smith will.
Okay.
And North Hadley Dam.
And the Friends of Lake Warner, right?
Yeah.
Friends of Lake Warner. Okay, I just, I just need the clarification on that. Thank you.
Okay, so um...
If I, if I could just add one thing, there's no guarantee they'll get the CPA money either. They have to go through CPA committee and that town meeting.
And town meeting. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Alan. I appreciate that comment.
I, I'm really concerned about fast-tracking this in this day and age with what we're dealing with here. I'd like to see this out for probably a minimum of four or five months to see where, where and when, if, if the economy goes one way or the other here. And if this COVID goes away.
I'm going to start calling you the chief can kicker here that kicks it down the road. We've got a...
Road for a lot of years now. What's another six months, you know, at this point?
The problem is the roof needs repair. There's, there's just more and more things as we sit and wait. So we need to, we need to keep moving here in the process. And if we don't get anything, then we can reevaluate. But to stab it out there for five or six months, I mean, we, we got to make a decision here. Otherwise, we're going to be into this for even more money. We got to mothball it. We got to do something, so.
We're just looking for letters of interest. We're not looking for proposals or anything along those lines. So this could be anybody making any kind of interest in it. It's not set in stone. We're not putting anything out to bid. It's just letters of interest. I think doing this, having a, what is it, eight-week turnaround, something like that? That's plenty of time for this type of thing that we're doing.
I think it also offers us other perspectives that we may not have thought of of use of the building.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying. You know, if we had a little longer period of time and we got more ideas in, maybe there's something out there that we haven't thought of, you know?
Right, exactly. It's, the only thing that's going to cost the town is the postage for the letter.
Yeah.
All right, so could I get a motion to approve uh this, this solicitation of letters of interest?
Yeah, I can make a motion to uh send out this letter, this request for letters of interest. And I guess, I don't know if we want a certain date, to put a date on it. Um, you said December fourth, but it said December sixteenth in the letter. I don't know if you prefer one over the other.
Uh, what day is the sixteenth? Uh, that is a Wednesday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Carolyn? Okay, cool. Let's, let's stick with the sixteenth and give it a little extra time.
Okay.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 John sounds excited about that one. All right. Um, let's see, going down the list here, let's uh, let's actually jump to, because I know Tommy probably wants to get out of here. Uh, we're going to pass over the Cleaning Services Award tonight. Uh, we've got some more work to do on that. But let's talk about the Building Inspector Project Report. Tommy, you ready to do that?
Yes, sir. Yeah, how's everybody doing?
Good.
Great.
Good. Uh, thank you for giving me a report on the uh Building Department. Um, I'm about two weeks short of uh my six months since I was hired full-time. Um, we've been working on the um online, which, a little impatient, uh, we were supposed to be online. The last promise was the first half of September. So I did get on our salesmen, um, and we're actually scheduled now for training for everybody on the uh week of the November ninth. So that should be next two, three weeks. Um, an update on where we stand financially or, or uh revenue-wise. Comparing from nineteen to today, we're, last year we're at three hundred and five permits, eighty-seven thousand, five dollars. Um, this year we're at three sixteen permits, a hundred and twelve, three twenty-six. So we've actually up eleven more permits and over twenty-five thousand at this point. Um, and a little update on our uh project coordinating meeting we have every Tuesday at one-thirty, which is very beneficial for myself as well as, you know, the other departments that um join it. I don't know if you want me to discuss some of the ones from the last, um, I believe Jennifer attached Tuesday's um agenda? If you want me to just discuss a few of them or people had questions on them?
I, I would just kind of summarize what it is that, you know, we do in, in, in this meeting. I mean, if someone, i- if an issue pops up, uh, why is this, you know, let people know that, that this is, and I'll say it's kind of like a uh, a roundtable troubleshooting session for enforcement inspections, you know, things like that. Planning Board Bill's usually there. Um, so it's a chance for everybody to be at the same table over Zoom and, and deal with these issues. So talk, talk a little bit about that. Explain why it's helpful.
Sure. Um, it's, it's very helpful. I said more so for me than anybody else. But um, anybody has anything, we add to it or there's a discussion at the end. And we seem to be able to, we have to leave a lot on, even though it's ongoing. Um, and being very busy with all the permits and all, but, you know, everybody can have their, put their input to help each other out on it. Um, some things like uh number six, River Drive. The issue came up about the dumpster and the trucks in the way. So where I was able to go out and then, you know, by the end of the week, that's supposed to be moved for the right of way. Um, a big thing is the Connecticut River issue. And that I wanted to bring up as far as the board is asking permission. Um, I've been on, on committees and that to help in other communities. But as far as setting a committee up to work on the bylaw. So what, what I was going to propose, whether this is how it works, is to get, you know, somebody from ZBA, planning, fire chief, a few of the residents that have, you know, butt the river, and come up as far as working on a new bylaw, which, um, you know, ZBA agrees we need to, planning and all, we need to do something to make it so it's feasible or totally, you know, stop all these trailers along the river.
I think you need to add in there, Tommy, CONCOM.
Yes, yes, conservation, um...
Because they seem to be barking up the wrong tree lately. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, they actually...
I'd like them in on that because they need to be directed towards uh what's going on along the riverbanks. That seems to be uh something that we need to look at. Um, and they're, they should be a part of that.
Definitely. I also had Board of Health. I just didn't read my notes here. Board of Health for sure would, would be on it as well. And anybody else that you could think of or, um, you know, in the email that would, would volunteer to work with it?
Yeah.
Is this, is this something that you would want, um, you know, people to volunteer? Or is it, could I get a list asking the departments and boards? Um, as well as, you know, some of the people that have a big interest along the river? What's the best way about going about it?
I, I think uh advertising on Channel Five and certainly asking each board that you feel should be on your committee, uh, asking them for a representative.
Okay, all right.
And see who volunteers to do that. I think that's important.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely the citizens that own property along the river.
Yep.
You know, if you don't want to approach some of them, I will volunteer to approach them.
Yep.
We've actually...
You don't have to have everybody, John. You need to have a few Hadley residents that have property along
I know.
the, the river. So you need to have, you know, you need, you don't need everybody. You need a few people.
Well, you're going to affect a lot of people through Hadley on the Connecticut River.
Well, that's, and that's what we should do. I mean, we have to do for sanitation and everything else along the river. I mean, DEP gets on us for all these other things. And I think DEP would be involved with anything being discharged into the Connecticut River, wouldn't you?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I still want the input from the property owners.
I, I absolutely agree with you, and I think that there could be some resolution um and some type of bylaw put into place that everybody's happy with.
Uh, Tommy, why don't we reach out to the committees or the different boards in town and get them to give us a, a list of who they want to send to this committee? And then we can advertise on Channel Five for volunteers. And then, uh, you know, maybe we get a few of the property owners along the river that want to participate. Maybe we don't, but then, um, you know, at least they have a chance to, to speak up and, and join the process if they want to.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
I had one...
You'll go ahead, Joyce.
I had one other question for you about the project that's being done at Hopkins Academy. Who, who actually is monitoring that, Tom? Uh, with gravel and dirt being taken out of there? Who's, who's, who's got their eyeball on that?
Um, I'm, I'm assuming, I don't know if Chris is still on the DPW. They did reach out to me as far as taking the loan, and that's why I brought it up. Um, I don't know if it was a few meetings ago, when, when it was, that they wanted to, you know, haul some of it to a, to an onsite as opposed to leaving it, you know, which would have been in town. But at that point, we wouldn't have known where it went to. And, you know, I reached out to the um engineer and they said that it's in the contract that they had to haul it to our, you know, DPW so it all stayed, you know, to use for the town.
Okay.
They haul, they hauled it to the yard for uh three days, Joyce. So that, the, all the loan is, is, is in our yard.
Okay.
Right next to the elementary school pile.
It was a, nerds, right, John?
Yeah, I think it was two hundred and something, Tommy?
Y- yeah, they were estimating like four hundred and they wanted two and two, like, I don't recall exactly, but it was definitely over two hundred yards.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to double track because uh when I was on the Building School Committee, uh, when we built the elementary school, um, there was much disruption and controversy about where did that uh loan go that was on that property? And uh, the OPM on that project didn't actually know where the, where that went. So, you know, uh, nobody kept track of it. So I just wanted to make sure that we're all on board where whatever is going on down there. I didn't know actually who was in charge of monitoring that project because it's a school project. Um, so I just wanted to be sure that somewhere where it, it's a flood plain. Uh, I would think that CONCOM would be in on that because it is a flood plain. Um, and, and loan taken out of there, that makes it more accessible if there was a flood. So am I wrong on that, Tom?
No, nope. And uh, like I said, I, it's not permitted or anything like that. So when they reached out to me about taking the loan, uh, the engineer was very cooperative to, you know, to pull the contract and review it with me. So, but no, that would be something that, you know, DPW, Conservation, we all probably should in the future have a, have some type of input to keep an eye on things.
Yeah. Do you know if CONCOM was involved with any of this with being at a flood plain?
I don't believe so, but I can't, you know, not a hundred percent sure.
Okay, so that's a question for us to reach out to them and ask.
Probably had to approve all of the uh subdrain and everything they put in there. So they had to have known, known what was going on.
Yeah, I just, I just would like an answer to that, if CONCOM was involved with that or not?
We're talking about the Hopkins Academy athletic fields?
Yes, David, thank you.
They do, they do have a permit from uh CONCOM.
Okay, I just wanted to know if anybody was monitoring that from CONCOM.
I can check in with Janice.
That would be great. Thank you.
I'll actually add it on the list for next week.
All right, thanks, Tom. I appreciate that.
Yep, thank you.
Bill, did you, did you want to jump in and say anything about the weekly meetings as far as have they been helpful for planning issues or anything like that, or any issues you see?
Yeah, originally when uh we started, it was a little over a year ago. And it was basically because of some lack of communication with departments and things like that, especially when it was big projects. So that's when we started forming, you know, and having these meetings, which have helped tremendously. Um, and then, of course, the river this year, we, we've been trying to work on it, but it's trying to get all of the boards together um to let us know what it is that they're all looking for in each part of their parte in the, in the river. Um, so that's basically what we're trying to um work on now is to get everybody's input from, um, as far as planning, ZBA, Conservation, Board of Health, um, our department, fire, police, anybody's input. And our plan is to, as we were talking about forming a committee, is to eventually um send out then a, a letter, you know, everybody come together, send out a letter to actually the property owners. So they're aware, because of what we're finding, especially because of COVID, a lot of people, property owners are just letting people put trailers and stuff on their, on their own property. Um, this way, if we get in contact with the property owners, um, it, it will help a little bit, especially getting these trailers permitted. So that's, you know, one thing that we're trying to work on. Um, so we're hoping by next year that we're going to get this a little bit more under control. And um, you know, so that's the one ma- one of our main goals is, is trying to work on that river.
That's been an issue for eons, eons. That's been an issue for eons, eons. You're not going to solve it overnight, but we're going to try and help you do that.
Exactly. And our, and our main issue is because of FEMA. And I think that's the problem. A lot of the property owners don't realize. How, you know, FEMA, you know, DP, a lot of that is. Part of it and people are putting in docs without, you know. Getting the proper permits and, and things like that. And that's why we want to form together this letter. That will kind of let the property owners know what it is that each. Department is looking for. We do have a couple actual, um, property owners that are very interested in, once we form a committee. To kind of help us out. And to reach out to the people that they also know. That are out there. So I, I, I think that will help tremendously too.
You know, you've got so much to look at and we're never trying to. Tell people what to do with their property. So, but we are trying to regulate them on DEP. Concom. Everything else that a bust the river that's, you know, environmental. Which we have to be aware of in the town. So in setting up that, yeah, if that's your property, you want to put a trailer down there, fine. But not, not five or six trailers of all your friends and neighbors and whatever. So I think in, in looking at that, I think they have to be reasonable also, but. You know, I think we're at a good start where we have to, you know, do something of this nature because. Of the COVID and people taking to staying. The sales of campers and everything else this year has been up astronomically and people are just taking that. And deciding that, well, I'll just stay along the river and that'll be my vacation for the year. So, you know, us helping you out with that, we're more than happy to do that.
Yeah. And like I said, that's where the, the police and every, well, like Mitch's, uh, island. That has been great with that cleaning up. But one of the concerns and we were getting a lot of calls on where people that do have houses right along the river too. They were having a lot of concerns of the jet skis and the boaters being out of control. And the river just getting very congested. And so, um, that's when we started really saying we, we really, really need to do something about this.
So in an essence. We don't have control over the waterways.
Right.
But, but your, um. Marine, um. I'm trying to think the Coast Guard of the, of there, they're the ones that monitor that. And actually. In years past, when we used to put our boat in the river, they used to be down there. To make sure that you had the life preservers and all of that and safety. On your boats before you put them into the water. I'm not sure where they're at right now, but maybe they're still doing the same thing. But it has become more of an issue, I'm sure with the amount of people. That are doing boatings and things like that during the summer. So. You know.
Right. And that's why we're trying to push the permitting, uh, back, you know, so they go in front of the ZBA like they should be. So this way as, uh. The fire chief Mike Spank, Spankable said, we need to know names of people who are actually own the trailers. Um, and get their consent because if they're not there and we get a flood. You know, things, they're starting to use big propane tanks. There's just a lot of big concerns that we're starting to get. And, um. We're trying to hopefully. Get control of it real quick.
Yeah, it's for their, it's for their own safety, if anything else. You know, that's what it's all about. So.
Yep.
Mr. Dwyer, did you have anything to chime in on the meetings or?
I have been on the development team meetings for, uh. You know, however long they've been going on. And, uh, yeah, the river is an issue. The. Placement of campers on the issue, uh, on the river is an issue. We have, uh, a proposed bylaw from. One of the state alphabet agencies. That we. We may be at for the Springtown meeting. And, um. Yeah, we do have to get a handle on this. North Hampton does not allow campers or trailers on the. In the flood plain at all. Hatfield does not. So we have, uh, some spillover from there and we have people from. As far south as Agawam who are camping here. And it will potentially affect our, uh, flood insurance.
Okay. Anything else on that that anyone would like to add?
I just have one thing to say that Bill has been great when he's at our meetings because he's a fountain of information.
Alright. Before we go on to library, fire station and senior center updates, I just wanted to give, um. Molly sent over an update, Molly Keegan. Regarding the, the campus coalition CCC. I don't know what it really stands for, but. Just some of the highlights. So. There's been a lot of concern about what's happening with parties and, and students and whatnot. So Amherst Police Department, they're down seven hundred service calls this semester compared to the last, uh, last year. The same, the same semester last year. Noise complaints are up slightly. Uh, but that's due to revisions of the town bylaw, uh, requiring more stringent enforcement. There's been no open containment violations, uh, four cases of minors in possession of alcohol. For OUIs or DUIs, as people refer to them, uh, eight compared to fourteen last year. Let's see, no negative impact seen from marijuana dispensaries. Uh, mask compliance has been overall excellent with students. Most of the COVID hotline calls that they've been receiving. Are due to quote unquote perception accusations, meaning that people are claiming there's large, large gatherings in violation of. The governor's orders, but in, in effect, they are actually meeting the requirements of the governor's orders. Uh, Amherst Department calls are down thirty-five percent. Calls to UMass down seventy-eight percent. The town only calls are down about twenty-three percent. Uh, UMass Police Department very quiet on campus. No alcohol violations to date. The most concerning thing they've been dealing with is, uh, some disturbing Zoom bombings from people, uh, messing around with Zoom meetings for the students, but I guess no surprise there. Hadley and Sunderland, uh, minimal activity to report. Uh, off-campus life, uh, they're focusing on education for Halloween, doing lots of outreach, uh, this weekend. Seven of the. Go ahead. Oh, okay. Uh, seven of the eleven Greek life houses are open. Uh, one just announced that it was, uh, closing permanently. Early relationship building has worked out. Um, let's see, building inspector, some reports of disabled smoke detectors. Calls from parents about spring off-campus housing. Let's see, I don't know. So overall. Not too bad. Uh, granted, there's been a whole bunch of cases over there, but for the most part, the students are behaving themselves. And, uh, most of the. The claims and the, the complaints that I know I've been hearing about massive parties in town and Amherst and Hadley and whatnot apparently aren't as massive as people are making them out to be. So they, they seem to be making, meeting the governor's requirements. They may not be smart, but they are for the most part legal. So that's, that's where we are from the UMass update. So.
Actually, the, actually the numbers are down. They were high when they first started. But actually the cases coming in at this point, the number remains the same. But the amount of people testing, um. Negative are, are more than what they used to be.
That's good. And we are still unshaded on the map. Hadley is at least, so we're trying to keep it that way. Alright, so let's move on to, uh, let's do a senior center update. Jane, what do you, anything from the senior center?
This is senior center and not my liaison report about the senior center or both?
You can combine them if you'd like.
Okay. The senior center is, um, doing very well. We're loving our building. We had a flu clinic there today. We gave lots of tours to people after the clinic because it's their tax dollar and they're thrilled to see it that way. Haley's done a really good job about doing what she refers to as a soft opening. With limited numbers of people in the building for limited times, no more than six. In a group, obviously plus staff who's there all the time. And pretty much only one six person group a day. And. People are happy to be back and happy to be out and able to get around.
Great.
Christian, you want to jump in on the library and?
Sure, yeah. The library, uh, got their temperature, temporary certificate of occupancy. So they are able to start moving stuff in there. And, um. I think the paving is supposed to happen next week, but it's weather dependent. Uh, so. Don't know exactly when it's going to happen, but maybe hopefully before election day that lot's paved, you know? And that's about it there. I think, um, they might move. I think they're talking tomorrow night more about when they're moving. However, it's been thrown out maybe the week. Of the election, um, just close the library and. Move everything from library to library, but we'll see when the move date is after tomorrow night.
Did the sprinkler system and everything get resolved on that? I thought there was some discrepancies over there about. The opening. Can you clue me in on that? I'm hearing two different things here.
That might be Tommy since he's on the call here because I don't know that. Yeah.
Tommy.
Yeah, we, yeah, we had some issues yesterday again with the inspection, but everything, it, it's getting worked out. You know, I mean, everything did get worked out. It just, um. Took a little longer and all. I didn't want to, to bring that up. I don't want to put the blame on any, but, um, Mike and I were a little discouraged yesterday, but we got it taken care of.
Okay. So everything is a go then. Uh, that's what I was hearing before. So. I just wanted to make sure I'm hearing one thing from Christian and I heard something else. So if, uh. That's great. I'm glad things are on the move. Thank you.
The other, the other news.
Tommy, did you address that speed bump they got on the entrance? Did they do that on purpose just to show us, uh, that they can cause trouble or what?
I actually reached out to DPW to see if they could, you know, put something there today and they had all the trucks, you know, tied up or whatever, but, um. It is, I mean, the, the town car has troubles. I can imagine, you know, some of the seniors trying to get in and out of there, um.
Put some gravel or some of that, uh, chip that they're chipping right now a little bit and rake it around. Because the seniors must be having a hell of a time getting in that driveway in their little cars.
Yes, I, I will reach out again to Scott or, or, um, Chris tomorrow, but they couldn't get it today. But, you know, maybe tomorrow they could get something over there. It shouldn't take that much, just to. Level it out a little bit.
Yeah.
That would be well appreciated by the seniors. The other news is that, um. The joint library senior center signed, they dug the holes for the posts and. Within the week, it should be up and permanent.
Super.
Alright, Joyce, do you have anything for the fire station?
Not really. Um, things are moving along. We're have moved, uh, materials into the North Hadley substation. As you know, we're again doing, um, Mike and everybody is working very diligent. It's. Time consuming to, you know, get this set up for, uh, town meeting. So he's been working on that. We also have, um. We have the Halloween treats. So things are going through there that are also going to be going through. The sub and not the, the main fire station. They're setting all that up today and that's in conjunction with. Parking rec and the fire and public safety. And they're looking if anybody wants to volunteer. To sign up, um, to do the trunk or treat. And they're doing all kinds of things there. So please reach out to, uh, Lauren at the, uh, public safety and, uh. I guess that's where you would reach out to if you want to participate in trunk or treat.
Alright. I'll give the, my update from the DPW is, uh, Moody Bridge Road has been reclaimed, ground down to gravel basically and regraded. Uh, it's being paved from Bay Road to the Sylvia Okanti, uh, Refuge, um. Into this month. I think it's the thirtieth is the most recent date. It's been pushed back a little bit. Basically all the paving contractors are delayed on ninety-one. And the Orange Airport Runway repaving project, which is pushing all the other projects back. West Street was supposed to be milled today and tomorrow. They were able, it sounds like to finish it today. So, uh, that's going to be a rough ride for a couple of weeks until that is paved at the end of the month as well. So that's all I have there. And then, um. Let me just add about Halloween. I've gotten a bunch of questions about Halloween. And I, I put this out there. The governor has issued guidelines for Halloween. Best practices, masks, social distancing, things like that. And I put that link out there for people that want to take a look at it. Other than that, the town is not taking a stance one way or another. It's up to parents and families to decide. Uh, whether or not their kids should be going out or not. And so, you know, I've gotten a lot of questions of whether we're canceling Halloween. And, uh, you know. The town can't cancel holidays is the way I look at it. So that's up to parents to decide. Just be safe about it and have fun.
And I think you need to add that as a town, um, our emergency safety people. Have offered this option. Of doing the trick or trunk, tr- trunk or treat, however you want to say it. So. You know, they have that option that they don't have to put their kids in jeopardy. Everything is going to be done safely. At the fire station. And I think that. At this time, I think that would behoove people to, um, do this type of thing with their children to keep them safe. And keep their families safe. I mean, this is a thing that we need to do right now. Mask and everything are going to be required. Stay tuned that we are going to send out. What is exactly what the protocol is going to be. So. We're not saying cancel it, but we're asking you to be safe and make sure that your families are safe.
Yep, exactly.
One question on the trunk or treat, you guys probably know better than me. Do you have to sign up ahead of time and where would people, uh, sign up for that? Do you know?
People are signing, people are signing up if they want to participate and be one of the trunk or treats. So all, all the candies and everything are going to be pre-wrapped, given to people to pass out. And when you drive through, that's what's going to happen. So you don't have to sign up to drive through. But you do have to sign up if you want to be one of the participants. And being the trunk that's open. And receiving the candy. So they would like a call if you want to participate in that end of it.
Yeah, that's us and Joan Zusko is going to do the other one. So we're doing one car and Joan's doing the other.
So they're only, they're only going to have two cars, DeeDee?
So far as, as far as we know of, but then the fire station is planning on doing their little thing too. So there'll be several different ones. There might be more than two.
Alright, so only, only two cars are going to be passing out candy is what you're saying?
No, that's not right. They, they have several cars passing out candy. Tommy, DeeDee and Joan will represent town hall.
Okay, great.
There's going to be lots of police officers and stuff. And their families, I believe, are the ones who are giving out the candy. And, um, Chief Mason just binged in and said, you don't have to sign up, just come out and get candy.
Okay.
They're going to have plenty.
What time is it? When do, when do people go there?
Five to seven, I believe. Five to seven.
On the thirty-first?
Thirty.
Friday, thirtieth.
Friday.
Okay.
Friday.
So people can pick one or the other or do both nights if they want. So. And, uh, the important question, will there be Reese's? That's, that's the important question.
Friday night is cabbage night. Back in our day.
No, I believe, I, I don't want to say which business it was, but there was seven hundred dollars donated worth of candy from one business and. Liquor forty-four is three hundred in order to, um, help with it. So there's a thousand dollars donated for it.
Oh, nice.
Great.
I, I tell you, Hadley is very blessed, uh, with all of our businesses. I, I can say that and I thank them. Publicly, everybody that participates and our stores are just, uh, super, um, in helping us. With all these things and projects and holidays, you know. Can't live in a better place, that's for sure.
John, do you have any updates from parking rec or veterans or anything that you want to give or you could?
No. Not at this time.
Okay. And then, uh, Carolyn, I skipped your administrator update. Did you have anything you wanted to cover?
If I can, I'll, I'll do it real quick. Probably the most exciting part for me has been working with David going over the budget and his. Ability to analyze and predict. Um, and so we went over the, uh, revenue for year to date to the end of September. And, um, his targets from the spring and putting. And his targets from the spring and putting this together, he's, he's right on target. It's been very interesting. So our, the local receipts, state aid and real estate and personal property taxes, right on target, lower than last year, definitely, but he had, he had predicted that, and his numbers are very close. About, it was very interesting to see that. What is of concern is water and sewer. Those funds, those revenues are down. Sewer is down about 50% and water is down about a third. And so we, that is an area, it's not uncommon. The other communities surrounding us probably throughout the state are experiencing the same thing. But we really need to monitor that closely, and I will be talking to Chris tomorrow about that. The town departments are submitting, submitting eligible costs for the second round of COVID. Schools are getting, from the CARES Act. So the schools are getting 225,000. They're eligible for that. The town's eligible for 250,000. Thank you to Jennifer and Deborah, who've been working on that, gathering information from all the departments to submit anything that they had to expend extra for, to accommodate COVID impact. And just quick about the, the early voting, Jessica, the town clerk reported that it's going very well, about 50, averaging 50 people a day. So that's going to continue to the 30th. She also applied and received a $5,000 grant to help pay for the purpose of planning operational for the safety from COVID impact of planning for attending for the elections. And she wanted to remind everyone as well that on Monday, November 2nd at noon is the last day for voters to request the absentee ballot. This is mandatory, and they will need to make an appointment with Jessica to do that. This is also the same day that is the early ballot, early ballot removal, which will take place upstairs at 11:00 on November 2nd. And just to remind you that anyone wanting to observe the removal of the early voted ballots from the envelopes, they need to register by email to Jessica, which is clerk@hadleyma.org in advance, so I just wanted to get that word out. So that's it. Busy with lots of other stuff, though.
Carolyn, I just have one comment for you. Before David goes anywhere, you have to get his secret on how he gets these numbers right all the time.
What I, what I tell him all the time is, this is the best college class I ever took and got through it. But it really is remarkable. There's, it, it's just, I cannot tell you what the benefit you have had with having David here.
Over these, over these last 15 years with him, I don't seem to understand where he comes up with these numbers, but I'm so glad he does, so.
Yep, and I'm learning a lot, and he's been a great teacher, so.
Great, great. I'm glad things are going well for you. Thank you.
Very well.
Good.
I have a question about the ballot opening. So the ballots are going to be opened and put into the voting machine at that point? Or just confirmed that they are registered voters?
So you're above my skill set. I would have to ask Jessica that unless David might know that answer. I'm not sure. David, do you?
Actually, I wouldn't, I wouldn't presume to, to say. I think we need to get that information from Jessica.
Susan may have that answer.
Jessica said this year, they are allowed to actually put them into the ballot, into the ballot box, feed them in earlier because they expected such a, a large volume.
And I just, I just want to say that I'm leaving the town in very good hands and Carolyn, she's she's going to serve you very well.
Well, thank you, David. Thanks for, how do I, precepting her? I guess that's how I'm going to put it.
I'm going to call him. It was mentor, but now I think it's my preceptor.
Sounds good. That's the word I use in nursing. We precept.
But I'll get that answer for you, Jane, if you'd like, because we'll touch base tomorrow anyways.
All right, any other announcements before we wrap up tonight?
No, I'm lax on that tonight, mine, my end of it.
All right, so we'll see everybody next Wednesday?
Again? Two weeks in a row?
Yeah, just for you, Joyce.
Thank you. All right.
Have we set a date for the forum before town meeting?
Uh, yes. Let's see.
It's the 28th. You're going to have a split meeting. You're going to do select board till 7 o'clock, and at 7 o'clock, you'll start your forum.
On the 28th?
Yeah.
Even though the meeting isn't until the 14th?
I mean, you could change it, but that's what y'all had said at a previous meeting.
Yeah, we usually, we usually do it a few weeks ahead of time, just to get people aware of what's going on.
There's not much happening anyways, so.
No, no.
We need to be posted, I believe, that Friday. So, I mean, really, the 28th is the last time we can make any changes anyways, so, you know, we will be all set to do a forum that evening, one way or another.
Okay, sounds good.
Just I, my calendar might not be synced up, so do we have a meeting then on the 4th, too? Because I have it on the, as the 4th and the 18th.
I do not have one listed on the 4th.
Okay.
The 4th in November?
Yeah.
Let me check. I, I'm not sure. I'll get, I'll let you know next week for sure, but we do have one next Wednesday, the 28th.
Okay, yeah, I can note that. But yeah, if we could just, maybe, maybe just note next week what our schedule is, just so we have it all the same, because maybe it does have to change with town meeting being on the 14th.
Now, you know what? You're right. It's under board docs in the drafts. We do have one scheduled for the 4th and the 18th, so you are correct, so.
Yeah, I have it on the, I have it on the 4th.
Yep, so you're right. I think we had added this to deal with the town meeting delay, and that, that's why we had an extra one on the 28th.
Okay.
Fabulous, fabulous.
We did it for you, Joyce.
I love, I love meetings. I mean, that's my life. I love it. I'm not at the beach, I'm not at the beach anymore. It's okay.
And any other one?
Amherst homes, so now you got plenty of time to spend with us.
No, I love spending time with you guys, absolutely.
All right, last call for announcements. All right, can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
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 All right, have a good week, everybody.
Bye.